Okay, we'll call this meeting an order. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Stephanie Smith, board member. Ida Bauer, board member.
Ryan Christelli, board member. Michael Smith, board member.
Delaney Hanson, student representative.
Chris Nesbitt, superintendent.
Jamie Bailey, board member.
Thank you, board members.
Julie Moore, staff.
Dee Walker, staff member.
Good morning, Jerry. Do you want us to say your names? Jerry Carlson comes up.
Lisa Arnold.
Marilyn Charles, staff.
Pat McIsaac, our librarian.
Jennifer Roche, staff.
Karen Smith, staff.
Dr. Cross, resident.
Dr. Cross, resident.
Okay, approval of board meeting minutes for January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'm in for the approval of board meeting minutes for January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second that.
A motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, consent agenda.
Can we make an amendment?
Yes, please.
We're asking for the, we're asking for a motion on the addition of Barb Snyder's retirement under Consent Agenda number five, be personnel on two terms. You need a motion.
I'm in for the addition of adding Barb Snyder's retirement under item five-two.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
That's okay. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, return to consent agenda.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I would like to kind of make a special notation within that comment period of Dave, before we vote. Dave Howard has been with the district for twenty-six years, all the way through our lead mechanic. The vast amount of technology that Dave has worked through, even through the branch purchase electric bus to traditional diesel buses. Dave has just been an incredible valued member of our team and really sad to see Dave go. But I'm also happy to see him be able to move on and enjoy his retirement. Second, off of the addition of Barb Snyder, Barb Snyder, I feel like, you okay to read Barb's letter?
Yes, please.
Okay. I've been putting off writing this letter, but it's time now to finally let you know officially that I'm retiring at the end of this current school year. I grew up in a small town and was so excited to be teaching in a place that reminded me so much of my hometown. Thirty-eight years have gone by in a blink, but I met my husband here, I've worked with tremendous educators, and I've made lifelong friends. Plus, I now know generations of wonderful families. Elementary has been my second home for so long, but it's now time to tackle all the adventures Alan and I want to do to be a part of and be a part of. We have always said, we have one life and we want to do all we can do to experience as much as possible. Thank you to the kids, the families, and Alma's School District for these amazing years, Barb Snyder. And just would like to take a special note, Barb, I mean, in my eighteen months here in Alma, Barb has just been absolutely an incredible resource, support system, and the amount of love Barb has been incredible. So both Dave and Barb, I know I'm personally really sad to see you go, just in my short time here in Alma.
Right. I think that we all would like to thank both Mr. Howard and Mrs. Snyder for everything that they've given to all of our young kids. They have been valuable assets, so thank you and congratulations, and we'll see you at the end of the year at your little soiree. Okay, can we finish out the consent agenda then? There's been a motion made and seconded by Ryan and Stephanie. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discussion items. We'll start with a focus on the middle school. Julie Moore.
Nice of y'all to come watch me present. Good job. I definitely not really did for me, but I do have some exciting news for you and some things to share from the middle school. It's coming up any moment now. There we go. So Alma Middle School, twenty-two, twenty-three. Most of you know this is my first year as principal at the middle school, and so with that, I brought in maybe? Hold on. I'm not going here. There we go. My vision of what I imagined I could do for and with at my middle school. And so my intention and my vision is building a community and a culture where, I mean, that's the priority, where our people feel safe and where equal pride can soar. To start that off, I have brought in some building goals for our staff. This is our roadmap. Instructionally, I asked our staff to be proactive with transparency. So we broke, we have broken this up into some quarterly goals for them, just as ongoing focus points for them to think about. So quarter one was that they would, as teaching staff, they would have deadlines and academic measures and dates posted noticeably in advance. So the students aren't surprised, oh, this is due, you know, that kind of thing, in the classroom as well as on the Google, on Google Classroom. So it was available. Quarter two, we added in learning targets and success criteria, that those would be detailed and posted daily and available all period long, just not a PowerPoint and gone, but it was available again for students to be able to see where they're going and what they're doing. This quarter, we're looking towards proactive communication, particularly towards home for struggling students regarding the next steps. What can they do to get out of where they might be? How can we help your student grow along? So we're trying to be very proactive in communicating with the students. That's our focus this quarter. Additionally, we have a social emotional learning goal, and in August, we spent time with social emotional training in our summer institute as a staff, and we learned about the amygdala hijack and how that impacts learning for students and what happens in classrooms. And so we have put a goal in there to reduce the amygdala hijacks for our students, how often they happen and how long they last. And so to do that, we have started with quarter one, noticing them, getting to know them. And for me, as a brand new principal and, or as principal new to the building, that's been a challenge with three hundred and sixty new faces. But I'm getting there, making progress all the time, greeting them, talking to them, and before we just say, hey, take your hat off. Let's have some communication and some relationship going on. That's part of the idea. Second quarter, we revisited what brain breaks were and how to use them, both for an individual and as a group in the class. And this quarter, we're working on recognizing that all behaviors are a form of communication and to approach it with curiosity, because sometimes behaviors are very off-putting and you get frustrated, et cetera. So it's like, why is the student responding in this way and what can I do as an educator to support that? Over that. So this is our overall roadmap and our some goals that we have. We have made a few changes. We, the staff, adopted the slogan, slogan of Eagles care. Community, we all belong here. Accountability, we accept responsibility for our actions. Resiliency, we recover from and adjust misfortune and change. Empathy, we care for others and support, show support for another's feelings and experiences. Now, care was previously in place at the middle school, that slogan, but we adjusted some of the meanings behind the words and what our intentions were and have carried that forward with the leadership team as well. So we have T-shirts. This is our staff in our T-shirts, and the leadership team has theirs that are similar. So we have a few more changes than that. First thing we did is we, this is a pretty big systemic approach, that we realigned our classroom assignments to group grade levels together. So previously, there were different grade levels throughout the building. We have relocated eight different classrooms, so now, at the end of the upper hall at the east end, is four eighth-grade classrooms. Nothing else in between them, they're just located there. And then next to that is the sixth-grade classroom, straight across from each other. Seventh grade is down in Florida. Oh, that's what they call that little extra downstairs wing. We have three classes down there and then one in the portable. So seventh grade is downstairs and eighth grade is upstairs far in, sixth grade is upstairs closest to the office. Our CTE classes are out in the new portable, so those are mixed grade levels. But for the most part, we've realigned our, how students move, how they move throughout the building. This is to help decrease bullying and intergrade access, where there is just maybe some misleading guidance going on. We made a large change in our sixth-grade core content classes. We have shifted from one teacher teaching all math, all science, et cetera, to two-hour blocks with ELA and social studies tagged together and math and science tagged together. So one of our teachers has math-science for second, and third, fourth are the sixth-grade elective courses, and then fifth, sixth back to another math-science block. That's how they're set up. We did this so that this is a, the research shows that the longer you can have students be, oh, help me with my word, subcontained. There we go. In the same classroom, the better their academic outcomes are. So we're kind of, the transition from fifth to sixth grade is a big challenge. So we've seen, they had previously seen some decline and maybe because of that. So we're trying this and we are having some good luck, some good results coming. I'll show you that in just a few minutes. We also focused our lunchtimes on grade level as much as possible, again with an eye towards safety and supporting that. So seventh graders primarily have first lunch, sixth grade are second, and eighth grade, I guess, a late one. That's what you get from being oldish. We adjusted our student-led conferences this year to include access to all teachers. Previously, when they would come in, they would be in a homeroom environment, and that teacher may have them in class or might not have, and they weren't able to answer the questions you might have about the math class or the English class. So this year, all our teachers were in a cafeteria, were literally in the cafeteria, available in a roundtable type situation where you could come and talk to any of the teachers that you needed to. Seemed to go really well with the parents, being able to have access and answer, get their questions answered better. We had a few more changes. We have some early adopters of the mastery-based learning in our building, and they have been implementing some levels of mastery-based learning to see, how does this work? How can I help it and make it happen? And we have seen some noticeable impact. One of the things that happened, as one of our teachers used to have points lost for being late, that kind of thing, or not making up work, et cetera. And so they would lose points and the grades would go down. So if they didn't have their book today, there could be some consequence for that. So now what's happened is that that set aside as a responsibility, a very tiny bit of their grade, a very tiny bit, and the grades went up. When they started measuring the learning rather than just the process, some big changes happened. And the students are familiar with mastery-based learning to a proficiency scale from elementary already. So we're bringing it back in and it's working. We added elective courses at the sixth-grade level of student success. There was a kind of student success, but not quite to what we're doing now. We have included the career readiness, a little bit of career readiness component to that sixth grade, planting the seeds. What might you want to do? Does this interest you? We're using the High School and Beyond Program, which is on Google, but travels with them all through the remainder of the grades. So work that they're doing now will stay with them. We also added a class as one of their electives called Mindful Movement. And why I'm pointing this out is because a lot of middle school students have struggles on how to handle all their emotions that are just exploding, and this mindful movement class is mindfulness and some yoga and how you can de-stress and decompress, some good stuff happening there. We also added an allied health course for seventh grade, seventh graders who are interested in a career, possibly in the medical field, to give them some thoughts to go there. They're getting to do exciting field trips, et cetera, to go see what's this like, other things. And you will be happy to know that we learned a new, a few cheers at the middle school. You're like, what does that have to do with anything? Let me tell you about that, just a moment. Along those lines, I want you to know that we have reestablished some older traditions. Okay, it has been a long time since we've been able to have assemblies. And so getting kids out there and competing, and this was an egg toss. I think Mr. Gaskins and maybe Ms. Kinderly or someone might have ultimately been the winners. But it was really exciting, and the sixth-grade kids really showed up and did a great job on that one, just saying, it was quite amazing. We're like, oh. This is our first, this is a snapshot from our opening day assembly at eight-thirty in the morning on that first day. And I'm going to tell just a brief story, but back in nineteen ninety-something, I was teaching in the state of Idaho, and in this little town, they would do this cheer, and it stuck with me all these years. And the cheer was about the year that they graduated. And so the leader asked them for their number. And what the class shouts back is the year they graduate. Okay, so I tried really hard to get this on the video, and, you know, it's been a little bit since COVID, so it didn't work the way I would like to. So I'm going to just play this on my phone, which is probably better, so you don't see me leading the kids in the cheer, which was really kind of funny to go back and watch. I am not in person anymore, so what you're going to hear in a moment here is me asking them, hey, sixth grade, or hey, seventh grade, I think this might be seventh grade, but whichever, what's your number? And they kind of repeated. They say, what? And I say, what's your number? And they come back and they say, twenty-nine, or twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty, twenty, twenty-eight. And so what you'll hear them shouting is their graduation year. And why I'm sharing this with you is because this goes to the heart of my passion for them, is that I want them to understand this is their future, this is who they are, this is what they are. And yes, if they can shout it at the top of their lungs, it's planting it in their brain that this is where they belong. So just see if I can get this to play in. Okay, Eric, why won't it play? Oh, wait. I'm saying that to me knowing, but you get the idea. So it's really loud when they are shouting at the top of their lungs, and honestly, it's really exciting. It's a lot of fun. Okay, there's their number. Students are back involved. Last year, you know, or the year before, as we were going through COVID. Jamie, I'm sorry you're not here because I really was thinking of you as I put this slide in. We are back to doing sports at the regular seasons. We are back to having band and choir concerts. We are having robotics club. We've added a prevention club, which is kind of new. But True North is coming in and they're leading kids through this, what your thoughts are kind of thing. We participated in Hoop Bowl. ASV leadership is outstanding. They set up the assemblies, they post the posters that are along the walls everywhere you go in Alma Middle School, in both English and Spanish, are amazing. They just are awesome. And we have FFA, which is kicking up and going. There's other things I'm sure I haven't mentioned, but it's getting back to normal, which is a really good feeling. And there's some adjustments in that, but it's coming back. And one of the things that is happening is academic growth. This is the snapshot of our most recent iReady testing for reading. The bottom line, down below, is our first window that we took in September. The red slashes indicate three or more grade levels behind. The simple red is two grade levels behind. The, it looks green there, but on mine, it's usually yellow. The in-between color is when they are one grade level below, and the green is grade level and at the beginning and more of a mastery of the grade level. Okay, so you can see, if you look starting at the far end, that this is all of the students, okay? That we decreased our lower ones from thirty-three to thirty. We stayed the same with the two grade levels, but we decreased those who are one grade level behind, and we increased those who are on grade level and who are mastering a grade level right now. And that's school-wide. Okay, the next one shows it a little bit more by grade level. And in this one, in reading, you can see where our green is increasing and what we're hoping for, and it's not all the way here, but that the reds do decrease. Okay, so we are moving this way. And if you look at the eighth-grade window, you will see how the mastery base really increased on that side and the green really showed. So that's reading. And again, snapshots. This is the math outcome. You can see the bottom one is where we started and where we're going. The red is decreasing, the green is increasing. That's what we're looking for. Once again, by grade level, greens are increasing. Look at the sixth grade. We are so happy to see that green happening. That goes back to those combination classes and not changing and all of that. There's positive things happening. We're also investing in, we are in iReady, but we have, last week, we did staff development with all the math features on using the iReady program, how to get the most out of it, et cetera. So that's another step in intervention and supporting our students in their academic growth. And what I would undoubtedly say is ketchup. Okay, we have many areas for growth, and there is a lot. We are working on safety, we are working on academic interventions, it's just all over the place, that we are doing positive things. And one of my original vision statements was that to bring equal pride back in. And so I want to share, I'm sorry, one more video clip thing with the chair that we did, and you will recognize this. But I think it's good that they start early to get this. Okay, and that's pretty cool. That's it. Thank you for listening to where Alma Middle School is standing at this point.
You have any questions for Julie?
I don't have any questions, just a comment that I think that that's a wonderful placement. That sixth-grade year is always the hard, that's a hard year to have in junior high, just a hard year. So having improvement is wonderful.
That sixth grade, it was a complete total overhaul, and we'll talk about it when we do the district mid-year update. But generally, I think they say, don't mess with anything. Year one, you really change the sixth-grade year at the beginning of your year one. And when you look at the historical data, and we'll be back later tonight on that sixth grade, you'll see that, remember that whole lot of options. I mean, the academic loss on that transition year. So the goal was to align that sixth grade to the fifth grade experience. So when those students are changing buildings, their day looks identical to what they experienced at the fifth grade. And Julie's right, when she shows you that sixth-grade growth and that increasing of those grid lines, and we can actually show student growth, that's pretty impactful. And we'll talk about it again later on our mid-year update, and watch and look at the historical data on our sixth-grade achievement.
Julie, I just wanted to say, I loved your vision the very first I looked at, because we'd been working on one for the Flight Foundation, like, that's a good one. But I just wanted to tell you that what I appreciated about it is I saw the balance and the priority that, you know, that you gave to learning throughout all those pieces, but it wasn't just a warm, fuzzy, felt-good vision statement. Like, you could see it actually worked out in what you shared across all the way through. So nice job of achieving your vision. I know you're still working on it, but thank you.
If I could just interject here for just a second, Julie, sorry I'm not there, but nonetheless, I am so excited to see those kids back doing those programs. I know your heart and I appreciate the passion that you put behind everything you do and your staff. So the traditions, go Eagles, love it.
Thank you.
Okay, review board policy, twenty oh-five, school improvement plans.
We last left off discussing our board policy review as part of our board goal of board policy review. You can go ahead and share it. I think I'm pretty happy with this board policy. There's only one big change, which is on this date that we've underlined. Board Policy two thousand and five indicates that we have the building administrators and leaders present on our school improvement plans with the data that we'll be reviewing later in the evening. Watch our first reading on Board Policy two thousand and four, which is actually the type of data you would like to see to show student growth, and how do we actually want data that's measurable and aligned to Alma data. This is going to move forward where our building principals do need to present this to the board. And I don't want to hang on is, is when do you want it? So I have a June thirty date right now that we begin that school improvement plan presentation to the board on June thirtieth, but I'm open to conversation on when you would like to begin the presentations. I'm open to a January first. And January first is generally when we begin our focus on kids' presentations, begin with the high school, January board meeting. Julie just did our middle school board meeting. Elementary will be next month, and the East Bears Harbor High School will be in April or May. So.
I'm not a huge fan of June thirtieth at all, because I feel like it's kind of done and over with. And the energy level to make changes is kind of already gone. So I would like to propose maybe a March first deadline, enough time that there's passed right after January, but, or March thirty-first or something, but I don't love June thirtieth.
I agree with Stephanie. I think that that's a, it's just a, it's too far out there.
June thirty just is the, was the boilerplate date, not a holiday. We're going to be discussing.
Okay.
We can do whatever day you want.
Do you feel like, like, March first is viable for what buildings we need to build to have out?
Building principal here, Julie.
I would go more towards the end of April. Honestly, to give a little bit of.
Second window. What is our third window for iReady testing?
Right?
I would say, as it happens, after state testing, state testing will begin with the last part of June. Last part of May or the first part of June. So generally, that June thirty day comes from thus, when you have your second window of testing. And that's where you have your most up-to-date data on where your students are at and how they're closing into the school year.
Well, if we set like a June first date, is that going to be enough time? I just think June thirtieth, it's, it's too far out, because then all of a sudden, you know, the month of July is pretty much non-existent. You know, and then now changes are being made in August, if need be, but the school right around the corner. So, but if we do June first, then I think we would have hopefully testing back, and that would give building principals an idea of how they want to, you know, some of the shortcomings or, you know, focus on those areas.
June first?
Sure.
Can you make a note that we'll update this board policy June first, and then we'll be bringing it back in two weeks for first reading?
Thank you. Okay, next we'll talk about expiration of a few board policies. Okay, next we'll talk about expiration of a few board policies.
We have two board policies, board policy on. When I get there. Board policy twenty eighty and board policy twenty ten. Um, we are not following these board policies and the board policies have not received supporter update in about, this one is about pretty close to twenty years. Nineteen ninety-nine over twenty years. So again, part of our processes is making sure that we are in compliance with our board policies and doing a cop overhaul study on our board policies. So um board policy twenty eighty, um, we actually maintain now our assessment system that's within our school improvement plan and our data system that you'll be include, that will be adopted tonight as part of board policy two thousand and four. It really does turn board policy twenty eighty into a redundant policy. And we're not, we're not, we need to be following our policies. I mean, if we have a policy, we need to follow it. It's not a policy that we we are following. Um, but again, not a big deal. This is why we are going to go through every single board policy in the district. And then once we get done, we get to start the entire process all over again. So next is a board policy two thousand and ten. This actually defines that we have a learning improvement team. That means that every building sets a learning improvement team, builds a board policy, submit, builds a learning improvement plan, submits it to the board, the board approves it. And then with included within it is a building budget. And building budgets are assigned by the learning improvement plan that is given by each of the buildings. And um I'm just going to be really blunt. This is not the process and how building budgets are assigned. So either A, we have a recommendation, I mean, we'll follow your recommendation for board action later. But either A, we have a recommendation that we'd like to keep this board policy, and if we do need to change the building budget generation practice for all of the buildings. Or B, we would be moving forward on, or we need to move to expire this board policy.
Okay. From the school district mid-year update.
Their recommended.
Oh, sorry.
Looking for a recommendation on expire or maintain.
Um, yeah, so I'll go ahead and go first. On the twenty-ten policy, I think that it's appropriate to expire it. Um, and then we can create one that's more aligned with current practice.
Even the language of it was very outdated, how it spoke about. Very scripts of people is very outdated. Yes.
As a, I mean, as a board, we really want to have this process. We review all of our board policies. We adopt it. We realign it. Again, it's no, it's not a criticism or critique. It's just why we're reviewing these board policies. I mean, a nineteen ninety-nine update really does shoot, you know, communicate we'd like to have that updated.
And if twenty eighty is already being addressed in the other, the new one, it seems to make sense just to drop it and make sure that it's included in our new one that we are adopting.
I would agree.
Okay, we can move forward with a uh the next board meeting. We'll be moving forward to recommendation for action for expiration of the board policy.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and move to the school district mid-year update.
All right, it is February, which means it is time for our mid-year update on everything we have gotten done so far to this year. So some of the challenges we've been working through as of last year, we came in last year and we, I mean, I think the best way to do is just pull the bandaid off. We had a clear risk, risk management, full investigation for lack of records and documentation on the teacher evaluation system and process to ensure that teacher evaluations have been done. Doesn't mean the evaluations or observations weren't done. It meant that we didn't have a central bias system that maintains a written documentation the records of those observations to ensure all steps of the contract have been followed. Right? I mean, generally speaking, when you're going through the contract, it requires a September fifteenth. You know, meeting, goal setting, identifying of the evaluation process, the teachers and the administrator are either a comprehensive evaluation system or they're on a focused evaluation system. And then you kind of go through that goal setting on that like that. If it's a focus, you kind of do that joint effort goal setting. And then we maintain the record of the meeting and maintain a record of every single observation that has happened. You have a requirement of one um planned observation and a requirement of one drop in evaluation, but generally we want to do more. In addition, it requires a routine training and renewal of the evaluation system, which we have now added. So we actually do a a calibration training where we go do walkthroughs together as an entire administrative camp. So we've installed and actually implemented the entire evaluation process. Coming in the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, we had an audit finding for lack of attendance on those Fridays. It resulted in an FTE reduction payback to the state of Washington. We've actually reinstalled the FTE like that during those hyper days. We've actually made sure that our attendance records are all up to date. We have a process to ensure attendance has been taken. Attendance is what drives enrollment. And that we've actually fixed that system to drive a comprehensive enrollment system in in our district. We have data. We expanded our data system beyond the state assessment. Again, we're adopting board policy two thousand and four tonight to make sure that we have the ability to set our district goals, what we want to have happen for our students and how we drive our goals for what we want to have happen with our students. And that we're moving on our district data. It has been a process. So we'll talk later in this presentation about the goals that we want to have students that are serving in internships and that students have on-the-job experiences. But we don't log that in as data collectible way. So how are we tracking those data experiences? So then that way we can ensure that we're reaching all of our students and our students understand what the commerce and jobs and industry looks like around the community of Alma. And how all of our students have an opportunity to engage economically with the community of Alma. Last year, we built an entire teacher onboarding system. That was an important deal. Twenty percent of our staff is brand-new this year. Um, I think most employers would go twenty percent rollover, except you're at the police department, so you probably wouldn't be impressed by that.
Not this year.
Not this year. Uh, we've had a twenty percent rollover of our staff this year. Forty percent of our staff can retire in the next four years. Generating close to a sixty percent over fifty percent of our staff rollover within a six-year period. Um, that's an astronomical rate saying that sixty percent of our teachers can be brand-new within one year. We actually built an entire to draw on boarding system. And then uh facility use, we've had a pretty open expansive use for our facilities. We also installed our uh security system. We actually had to rekey it and learn everybody in their neighborhood has a key to our facility. This has been a big issue because um if a community member is using our facility and somebody gets hurt, that community member becomes on the hook for the insurance first. That community uh member bears that responsibility for that level of injury. The way the state legal system works is after that person has been fully extended on their ability to meet that this little that financial liability, that financial responsibility to an injured party, then the school district would be responsible. Right? Generally, say a two hundred thousand, two million dollar lawsuit, that person would probably lose all of their assets at around five hundred thousand, and then they would come after the school district. So generally speaking, when we ask somebody to use our facilities, the general rule of practice is that all of those facility uses come with a third-party insurance for the protection, not just for the district. It is important for the district, but also for the person using that facility. Because again, the 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 in a litigation, in a litigious environment, they would only come to the district after all privately held assets of that initial person being sued had lost all of their personal assets. So really trying to build this culture like, no, we're not trying to get you, but we do need insurance because everything you own would be gone. And then they would come after us. You're really trying to communicate that to our community stakeholders who do use our facilities. So needing to revamp this entire system of having insurance. So these are some of the 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 emergent challenges that we've been working through in the last couple of years of problems where I don't really like to hide behind the problems. I like to just put it out here on slide one, and everybody can know exactly what we're working through in our school district. So see, these are some of the goals that we set last year that we achieved. We revised the entire employee evaluation system. We began building an entire district data dashboard system. Eric has done two data presentations. Again, that is the board policy we'll be adopting tonight, board policy two thousand and four on the data that we'll be using and evaluating and reviewing. The board tasked us with building a strategic plan system to make sure that we actually know the goals we want to meet. But it's been a two-year process building strategic plan because the issue with goals and strategic plans is if you can't measure it, it can't be done. And that's really been in the absence of having a centralized data system. How can we build goals that we should measure? And how are we collecting the data in which we want to measure? We also built in a certified employee onboarding system. Again, twenty percent of our teachers are new. Bringing our teachers in, walking them through the actual instructional practice that we expect to see. What we, how we expect our students to learn and really laying out an instructional expectation across the board. But that, but not like a really aggressive way, but in a way that brings on our new employees and really lays out the Alma way of teaching. Right? But a part of that is really identifying, defining and being what the Alma way of teaching is. Uh, last year, we had the board tasked us with completing a long-range facility planning process to identify a community-driven vision for the goals for our school district. And then completing a district-wide communications plan with implementation, actually, whether meeting tomorrow. Um, I don't know where, I was gonna ask him to refill me on. Uh, we're meeting tomorrow with the E S D as part of our long-range, as our communication planning process for an entire website adoption implementation. We will be actually holding out on how we will be maintaining our future communications with all of our students and families moving forward. Because again, we have a big issue we've been working on this this year is what information is coming through our district office so we can accurately, accurately communicate it. So again, this year's goal has been fixing our internal communication. A great example that would be obvious to the public is uh when we're posting about basketball games, immediately having five comments on that's not the day or that's not the time. So really needing to make sure that our internal communication system is clear, that we actually have the update usage. Now we can move forward to the next phase, which is our external communication on what's going out to families. And we have accurate, up-to-date, meaningful information that is reaching all of our families in our school district. So that's what we did last year. And we're still culminating last year. So we've had some successes. Uh, Alma School District is asked to be a part of the National Superintendent's Association called Learning Twenty Twenty-Five. It's an identification of sixty school districts for a report that will go to the United States Department of Education on what education needs to be doing. So we were asked to be a part of this national leader meeting. Um, just recently, we were actually in New Orleans for a trip that was fully sponsored by the uh Building and Lending Gates Foundation, the Walton Family Foundation, and the Casey Foundation. And we were in um Ms. Bershaw and Chairman Bauer and myself, we were in New Orleans. This program called Launch, program led by J F F, Jobs for the Future, which is led by the Harvard Department of Education on actually rebuilding an entire education system on building students for plans and connecting them to future careers. Um, it was also led by a program called Advanced C T E, which is leading all the National League for All Career Technical Education Training Programs. And it was the um Raider School Partnerships led, and then the last part, the research arm led by the Carnegie Foundation, which is the school improvement research arm through the Harvard Department of Education researching our work. And it was identified by the eleven top states in the entire United States that have built career pathways. And it was the top three school districts in each of the, these state got to build their own team, however they wanted to build it. So it was Alma School District, Tacoma School District, and the Richland School District were identified as the top school districts in the United States and how we built career pathways. Kind of build a plan for what the rest of the Washington State could be modeled after, for what the rest of the United States could be modeled after. And I don't know if you want to make any kind of comments.
Yeah, um, it was Christie and Chris and I had um Christie said it best. It was a massive think tank. Um, as a board member, it was really enlightening to be there to find um that out of the, I think what represented were uh seven, was it seven or eleven states that were their total? Um, to find that there were only two, maybe three states that actually controlled more at the local level. Uh, what your school systems can do rather than having the governor appoint your school boards and have this turnover. Um, and to be there to find what policies and procedures we need to do to help kids um open pathways and design their education to fit their needs for the future. I'm really excited about it. It's really promising. And Alma is definitely on the map with it. And um it's a two-year commitment, and I think it's it's more than worth it.
You want to add, Christie? Um, Alma has been a member of the National Superintendent's Association, redefining ready to task force through the National Superintendent's Association, saying we have to do more than graduation rate and test scores. That if we're not in this business to help students transition to the next phase in their life, we're probably in the wrong business. Um, we were recently asked, the the current, the previous lead was promoted to be the executive director of the National Superintendent's Association. And Alma, we were in Alma, we're asked to actually step in about three weeks ago to be the new national leaders, leading the National Superintendent's Association and co-lead the other superintendent is out of Mansville, Texas, just south of Dallas, to now lead this reshaping this vision that we need to do more than grad rate test scores. We need to actually have a defined definitive plan on preparing students for the next phase of their life. And because of Alma's work that we've done in this, we were asked to actually leave this work for what it looks like in the rest of the United States. So um that's been another big success. Then the last part is Alma is actually the only whole district in the Washington State Board of Education mastery-based learning work. That means actually changing uh the entire grading system, structure of systems, how credit is earned, down to exactly what a student learns. We did our last presentation on mastery-based learning a few weeks ago, and one of the examples and conversations we discussed was like flying, like the example of flying. It's like, like if your pilot got a a C average and they graduated as a pilot, well, what does that actually mean? Well, it could mean you got a D in landing. I don't know about you, but I want my pilot to have a hundred percent in landing. If you didn't figure out how to land, I want you to go back and figure out how to land. Um, that's mastery-based learning. We map out all of the essential learning that we have for our students, and our students go back and they do it until they get it. Right? I mean, the traditional education system, we see it all the time. Student struggles in chapter eight. Right? Well, we're moving on without you. You didn't get chapter eight, class moves on. You don't get chapter eight now because I have other things I need to do. But the problem with that is you might need chapter eight to understand chapter nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. And what we've done is now we've locked off that student's ability to be successful. So what we've done is we rebuilt an entire system. So Alma is actually another big success is the state board of education is actually built an entire cooperative. Alma is the only whole school district in the entire state of Washington. And there's some things that we get to do now, some flexibility that we get to do with this mastery-based system, which we'll talk about. So let's talk about the goals for this year. Finalize our strategic plan. Finalize the build of the district data dashboard. Update our instructional materials adoption process. Do we actually have content materials, instructional materials, and what our students are learning? Learning with, is it aligned to the learning outcomes that we want our students to have? I mean, now that we know what we want our students to learn, are we actually using materials aligned to what we want our students to learn? Culminate the long-range facilities planning process, updating the emergency operations planning process, and then continue a study of our athletics train, our athletics program. So these are the goals that we've set for this year. So timeline, board meets, we have our center board retreat in July. Um, in October, we set the superintendent's evaluation to achieving on these goals. February is the mid-year evaluation of these goals. I'm going to go through the mid-year process. And then we're going to next two weeks, we go through the evaluation and then we end the end of the year evaluation. And this is kind of the timeline exists. So let's talk about the first goal, complete the strategic planning process. We understand that our first goal that we need to do to improve student learning is we need to target kindergarten readiness and early learning. I think a lot of schools kind of miss kindergarten readiness and early learning because our kindergartners are not our students, you know, pre-kindergarten are not our students. General practices, you wait for students to come in as a kindergartner, and then we begin to how we can build an education plan. But what if I said there was a year negative one and a year negative two, and we could actually build a process to get in front of that? Um, next one is we want every student on grade level through our mastery-based learning system. So when we're actually giving out grades and earning credits, students know exactly what that means. Last one is we want all students career, college, and life ready for after high school. That means every student walks out of the door on June fourteenth, I don't know what day graduation is on this year.
It's the tenth.
Just the tenth?
I have a count.
On June tenth. On June tenth. We know exactly what those students are trained for. I mean, I I feel really, yeah, we'll talk about that later. Um, then the last one is we want to make sure that students have a meaningful education through our social emotional learning work. Um, a social emotional learning, really, a lot of people talk about like, I don't know what all that means. The biggest thing is, is do students find purpose and meaning for what they are learning on our schools? And I don't know if we can say this yet. I mean, this is year two. Year one was, and I kind of went back through it, year one was cleaning things up like just like, these are just the bare basic things we need to get in place. This year is all about now, how can we retool ourselves to actually focus on the goals of the district? So kindergarten readiness, we want to make sure that we actually identified what every kindergartner needs to know to be successful. We did a presentation on badge books. If you have a kindergartner, every kindergartner actually has this book. It maps out every learning that every kindergartner will have. And then the students can take the badge book and earn stickers, and the students actually have this ownership of what they learn. And it's a joint effort with parents, because learning doesn't have to happen at school. School is just a place that we can provide the opportunity to learn and really do that targeted learning. But if a student can, one of our badges is count to ten, and a kindergartner can count to ten, they can earn a badge. And we don't need to have the rest of the class sit there counting to ten. But our student can move on as we've divided it. And and we chose a badge book because it literally is just a book with big iron stickers, everything we want a kindergartner to know so they can hold it. We began, a big goal and a big theme is everything we do is by bringing the community in to be partners. We hosted, and I know uh um Stephanie Smith uh was actually hosted there. We held our first one in November on our community engagement night with our early learning centers and our early, our our parent and kindergarten and our parent partners. Where we're actually mapping out early learning goals, how our parents can get their children kindergarten ready, what are the learning tools, what are things they can hold? How can we bring parents in for a conversation to have our students kindergarten ready? What are the things you can do at home? A kindergartner can, an example was set up the sink and count forks as they put them away. It's a great way to get your kindergartner to a point where they can count to ten before they ever show up to kindergarten. And what can we do on ways to make it so that when our students are showing up, they have some of those basic essential kindergarten level skills? Do you have any thoughts? Last one, we launched the transitional kindergarten program. State allows us to have students as they turn five can begin enrolling in school. If we want to look at students that were not being served their E cap and early learning services already. Why it's important, this is actually our data, this is our kindergarten readiness data and it is going down. You'll see this in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, sixty-five, just shy of sixty-five percent of our kindergartners who showed up were ready to read. Ready to read, ready to do math, ready for social emotional learning. We are now down to thirty-five percent of our kindergartners who show up on the first day of kindergarten. So what's happening is a sixty-five percent of our kindergartners who show up are already behind academically. And then we spend the rest of our time trying to catch our kindergartners up academically. That's a pretty big and impactful number. So even though we're not technically responsible for students for their kid until they're in kindergarten. I feel that we have a moral obligation to begin building interventions and systems for our kindergartners before they show up. Why this is a big deal, most of that cognitive development happens in the first year of a student's life. And when you look at this, you'll notice that a student is about three years behind. The data will show if students that are three years behind and they show for kindergarten are fifty-five percent more likely to drop out. Zero percent chance of permeating to a post-secondary education. Students that are two years behind are forty-five percent more likely to drop out, still zero percent likely to permeate to a post-secondary education. So again, students that we're having show up that we've never had, we've never seen until their kindergarten. If they show up already behind day one, before they've ever even shown up to Elma Elementary, to our elementary school. Have already been set up, have statistically have already shown that their life opportunities have been cut short. And for that reason, we've had a moral obligation to put in a big investment to our early learning programs. Questions on early learning? So our kindergarten team's done an incredible job. They've got the badge books built, they've all been framed out, they're all in the hands of students. We're having parent meetings, got a parent meeting. Mark and Greg's not here, but last Friday, we brought our parents in and we actually walked through the process and the student achievement is incredible. Mastery learning. We've actually been adopting a new learning management system where we've mapped out, our teachers are actually mapping out all academic standards. We can tell you specifically what we want students to learn in every single grade level, how they can be successful. It is very clear, it is very transparent. We're loading this up into a learning management system that all parents will have a log into. And they'll be able to log in and see where their students are in their learning. This has been a long process to build. We've been on about a year and a half. Again, we were selected by the State Board of Education to do this. The State Board of Education is actually funding the, our school district, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for this year and next year. To pay our teachers to work out and map out all of those academic standards, so we get really granular on what we want our students to learn. And then Elma is again, we're a state leader in this. This summer, there was an article in the Seattle Times on this state-based State Board of Education on Elma. And on how we've actually taken this mastery-based standard because now that we know that these English standards require a technical reading and technical writing. We've been able to embed it into like a career-based learning opportunity. We have this ability or this is, or this, we have an ability to take the academic standards. And now that we've mapped them out and we know what students need to learn, we can be creative on how we embed it within our career and college readiness work. Make it so, yes, you're learning English, yes, you're learning math. And we can define the English standards you're learning and the math standards you're learning, but we can embed it in a way that's meaningful to the student. So this is kind of what it looks like for eighth grade. We've mapped out all of those A L A standards, we've bundled those and we've assigned it. And then we're, the next phase, Julie, something from wrong, is moving to a proficiency scale on what is the depth of learning that we've met. And then how we've taken those standards and again, in that far right-hand side is actually the new competency-based learning system that we'll be launching next year. It'll actually be replacing Google Classroom. And it'll actually take all of those standards, map out all of those standards, and parents will be able to log in and see specifically what each of your students have learned and to what level they have part of it. Career college readiness. We've mapped out our portion of graduate, again, early learning, we've brought families in, portion of graduate, we brought families in. Last year, we were bribing families with tacos two weeks ago. We wanted families to come in and say specifically what they needed to learn, like what we want our graduates to have. And we did a meeting on January twenty-fourth in English, meeting in January twenty-sixth in Spanish. I mean, again, this is your school district. And if our families want to have a voice, our family, we need our families to show up and actually have a voice for what you want from your school district. So and we will bribe you to come in and have a voice because we want to know exactly what you want from your students to learn. And we've been advertising through social media, parent emails. We had fires hung up all over the community because we want parents to come in and be a part of what they want, you want your students to have. I mean, how do you, we feel that education needs to be more than graduate. And now you're on my couch for the next fifteen years, please figure it out, and then when you're thirty-five, maybe you'll have it. So again, we've expands, we have expanded our launch of career, career, college, and life readiness programming. We actually, we took Eagle Sky Virtual Academy, built a partnership with Arizona State University. You could actually begin taking Arizona State University classes now and knock out your bachelor's degree free of charge through our online school. So students who actually wanted to do a career bachelor's degree, I mean, that'd be really hard to do, it'd be really oppressive. But you actually have a whole array of courses that you can move through and you can actually do earned admission and move your way into an online programming. This is in addition to our college and the high school programming partnerships that we already have. We already have a great career pathway programming, but Elma's also launched a full youth registered apprenticeship on file with the L and I Department of, Department of Labor. It is actually a full pre-study apprenticeship where students are paid apprenticeship-based wages and that they will actually earn their journey level certification when they complete. We have the only program, the Arizona State is the only program like it in all Western Washington. And the registered apprenticeship is the only one like it in the entire Olympic area. And we've been able to, through the mastery-based learning, have enabled us to embed in those academic standards. So we're the only school that's giving this core credit or working with that currency to engage in the next level on the workforce. This is actually why we were selected to be the national leaders, because no one else is doing this. Why it's important? Fourteen percent of our students are getting a post-secondary four-year degree, thirty percent are getting a two-year degree, fifty-six percent of our students of our graduates are getting nothing beyond a high school diploma. This is a big deal. I mean, if our students do not have a currency to engage in the workforce, we have, we have a moral imperative to do something about this. Sixty-nine percent of our graduates from the class of two thousand, all the way down to the class of two thousand, sixty-nine to the class of sixty percent to the class of two thousand five. To sixty-nine percent in the two thousand thirteen, which means that number is going in the wrong direction, are not earning more than a. Are not earning anything, they're not earning zero credentials. And that has an impact on their income. Those students are earning on average, so fifteen years out of high school, so we're talking fourteen years out of high school. So that thirty-two-year-old is earning on average thirty-five thousand nine hundred dollars a year. A thirty-two-year-old Elma graduate is earning on average, so a thirty-two without any kind of post-secondary education, thirty-five thousand nine hundred dollars a year. That is not the income to engage in our economy. We have to do something about it. So through Christie Kershaw's work, she's done an incredible job. We ran surveys to all recent graduates, ten years out, we went all the way out. We ran a community forum in English, we ran a community forum in Spanish. We ran surveys through all parents, we brought students in, we did it with our current seniors. And we wanted to have families have a voice and we did it through a fun way. We did it with ten-year-olds, nine-year-olds, five-year-olds, I got great drawings in my office. Where students were able to map out and say, what do I want to be and what do I want for my education in Elma? Like I said, the thing we need is, we just need people to show up because we're going to create the opportunity to listen in here. Everything we're going to build is from the voices of our families. And this is what we built. Our community built this, not the Elma School District built this, the Elma community built this, the people who are there built this. They said that we want our students to have practical pragmatic knowledge. We want our students to be visionaries for the future. We want our students to be effective communicators, be able to convey their point, you know, be able to have a conversation, right? We need more than just posting on Facebook. We need people to be able to have a dialogue and a conversation with other adults. We said we want our students to be resilient and adaptable, culturally aware of the people around them, informed and engaged neighbors. You know what's going on, you know why it's going on if you're a part of the build, part of the design and a part of the process. And that we're critical thinkers, so when we get the information, we know how to make an informed decision, not just what we were told. We know that we need to rebuild our data. These are the data that drives post-secondary attainment, right? A high-paying job, we want people who can make sure they come to school more than ninety hours a week. Twenty-four, five hours of community service and a workplace learning experience. This is not math and English test scores, right? That's not what's driving post-secondary achievement. Funny enough, the number one thing that drives post-secondary attainment is understanding why you're getting a post-secondary education. It's the number one reason why. So students actually have to have a workforce level experience in order to drive that. Students actually need dual credit in a career pathway course, but we have to get really flexible in how we define dual credit. Because again, our registered apprenticeship work is dual credit, they're fifteen college credits, two thousand hours of, two thousand hours of on-the-job experience while they're in high school. That is a lot, that is one year full-time, right? And we give full academic credit for that experience. Again, sorry, I kind of went through that. You have to have a GPA and an academic score that'll allow that permeation into a post-secondary education. So we need to make sure that students are kind of meeting both of these benchmarks and have a level of social currency to carry them on to the next phase of their life. I think we're actually tonight, it's right here, we're actually adopting an agreement at the fire department because we're continuing to expand our partnerships. We want more, and our goal is to have these career opportunity pathways with a level of currency for all of our students across the board. This is our goal for all of our students here in Elka. And again, it's not us, Christie, you've been at all these meetings, is this us? This is what our community says we want it.
It's me.
We. My video not shown, I was going to do the signing day video. Wild video, we actually hosted the Washington State State Superintendent in August for Elma, actually being the statewide model. Christie, you've been asked to be on the statewide team on building a career and quality readiness pathway, on redesigning it so other schools can replicate the model for the rest of the state of Washington. So. Um. I broke. Then last, actually, if you're interested in Arizona State, Ms. Beldon runs that through Eagle Sky Virtual Academy, so I don't, I won't build this video. But it's actually pretty impressive on how we've actually crossed the line, the L and I, O J T and R S I hours, that's embedded within the art system. Art system is the L and I Registered Apprenticeship Tracking System, the core academic credit, and how we align to that, so. And then if you're interested, Miss Beldon is actually available for a full Arizona State University partnership, I think, for your son is in the A S U program.
Yeah, he loves it. He loves it, he likes having agency over doing his coursework, knocking out English class and getting credit. And he's only a junior, so he's not even done.
Social emotional learning. We've actually implemented in a partnership with E S D one thirteen, we actually have a whole mental health counselors that are on our campus. We even have a dental nurse that comes in and provides all the dental screens for our families. We can bill Medicaid, you know, full medical services that are being available to our students that we just launched last year. But we haven't run data, we need the data, we have a problem with our students, and we're going to talk about some of our cell data. Our students are not feeling a level of connectedness and purpose for the rest of our campus to a point where we actually have a legitimate problem that we need to address with our students. And we had to restructure the instructional model in response to the cell and behavior data. It's Moore spoke about it on sixth grade, but it's kind of like when you look at student achievement scores and you look at the sixth grade scores and go, well, that's just because sixth grade's not learned. Or there's a problem in sixth grade. And we actually used our cell data to drive a comprehensive restructure of our sixth grade program. So what we found is our sixth grade falls off and we almost never recover. Because it goes, we have a fall in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, twelfth grade. That's six years, half their educational experience without the ability to recover from that loss. And we could really pinpoint the specifics down to a social emotional reason for the loss of our sixth grade. So let's talk about sixth grade, because I think that's just a great place to start. In the fifth grade at our elementary school, we actually in E L A, we sit in the fifty-sixth percentile. In sixth grade, we fall to the twelve point five percentile. That is a monster fall off in sixth grade, but it's not just one year. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, we nuts divided nineteen, what happened in twenty-one? Does anyone want to get your guess what happened in two thousand twenty-one? And we passed the state in two thousand twenty-one, what happened in twenty-two, though? Fell off again. We can't ignore that. Like, like, I mean, what is, what's the definition of insanity?
Doing the same thing over and over, expecting different results.
So we had to read, we had to do a comprehensive look at sixth grade. And honestly, in math, it wasn't much different, we're in the sixty-seventh percentile, actually the top third of schools in the state of Washington for math. And we fell to the twenty-ninth percentile, right? We couldn't ignore that either, right? That mean a total levelled out of criminal, so we actually decided to look at this through our social emotional data. And we actually surveyed our students through Miss Beldon ons. And we found that even though like school safety or students feel safe on our campuses, we're in the sixty-fourth percentile. Our students, this is the zero to nineteenth percentile, this is comparing our schools to all other schools in the entire, that have taken this survey, right? Right, thirty-two percentile, it could just be maybe all teenage, you know, teenage angst. You can't attribute it to teenage angst on the benchmark score. Because the benchmark score is where do you rank compared to all other schools in the state of Washington? Our students do not feel a sense of belonging, our students do not feel a value in your school that their education is trying to level purpose. We cannot allow that to continue. And we found, we really felt that it began in sixth grade, but we pulled that data and we're like, wow, our students feel, I shared this at our cell presentation a few months ago. Our students in our cell data in fifth grade felt like high stats, we're in the eighty-fifth percentile all the way down K five. And six twelve, we go to zero twelve. How do you go from eighty-fifth percentile to zero to twelfth percentile, eighteen, is it nineteen percentile? So what do the students say? Well, students said that, I mean, my content is somewhat interesting or slightly interesting, right? How often do you use the ideas in your daily life? Well, you know, nineteen students and sixty-five students that they mind, or students that they see no purpose behind what they're using in their classrooms. Or do students feel like it's important to learn, though? I mean, so I think that's a really powerful statement that our students feel like learning is important, but I just don't know where I'm going to use this. And I think that was a really important detail in our mastery-based learning work and how we mapped out those credits, standards, and how we can embed those standards. So we've been building the tools to make it meaningful, but our students don't feel like it's meaningful now. Our students want to know, like, do you actually feel, how well do people at your school understand you as a person? That's low, we have to do something about this. How connected do you feel to adults at your school? I mean, bulk of our students don't feel an adult that they're connected to. Ms. Moore said it, but actually, the best performance grade in a middle school environment is self-contained K eight, same teacher all the way, right? But we have teachers that our certifications don't line up right. So what we did is we took that sixth grade program and we remapped sixth grade where students are down from six teachers a day. You imagine this, fifth grade, ten, eleven-year-old, fifth grade, ten, eleven-year-old. I would have two teachers throughout the day with some exploratory teachers. And then they would change their year, brand-new building, six teachers all over the place. And when you walked into a classroom, they would do a passing period, they would go all the way down from, you called it Florida, all the way down in the portables down below. And then they would come all the way up to come across fourteen-year-old eighth graders, right? And then you put them in a room and then the next twenty to thirty minutes, these sixth graders would be so wired, absolutely no learning would be happening. And then you might be able to have learning done in the last twenty minutes. And we're wondering why our sixth graders are kind of kicking us off on this, starting, we're almost never recovering. So we said, we need to rematch the sixth grade day to the fifth grade day. So even though you're changing your building, your experience is no different than what you had the year before. And Ms. Moore has already showed you, just in one year, just in one assessment cycle, we've shown growth. I mean, when you look at that, right? Like, if I go back, and we felt like we could actually attribute all of this academic loss all the way down to sixth grade on this lack of connectedness. Because the very first day in your secondary school, you've immediately become lost and you've never become found again. We can't continue to do that. So we had to fix that. We needed to fix our data. Our Watkins data is still loading, that's our kindergarten readiness data, right? We just built our plan. But we're talking tonight, we're going to show you the I ready data to show your student achievement, that's an important detail. We were not testing, assessing, and evaluating ourselves consistently across the board as a district. We are using one metric system at the middle elementary school, a completely totally different metric system at the middle school. We launched I ready to the middle school, and Ms. Moore already said tonight that we're going to be engaging in a new training system on the. On I ready, we're training our teachers because I ready is new. And it's new because we had to have continuity. It's how can we see student achievement and growth and the impact of the decisions that we're making if we don't have the same type of data tracking system? So we had to install a whole new data system into the middle school to make sure that it was brought into alignment with what we're doing at the elementary school. So it's, it's an apples-to-apples comparison, and we can actually see how our students are progressing through our district. And then we have, we're currently building, and I showed you the redefining ready metrics, our career and college readiness dashboard. But the career and college readiness dashboard is still under construction because. But the career and college readiness dashboard is still under construction because again, we're not tracking the data. We have students that are enrolled in these learning opportunities, but we're not flagging it within our Skyward system report out. So the data process, Eric has been champion. Eric, has it been fun? I feel like we have a little meeting on Monday. Like, every 10 of him on Monday, we meet on our progress and I feel like there's just another cringe moment on openness. Not really. But we need to like build a system, like, we're doing things, but are we tracking the data in a way that we can get better? Right? And then the last one is our cell dashboard. And what does our cell dashboard mean? So we're actually working. We actually, this is our growth from this year. So this was the first assessment that we took in October. This is our second assessment we just did in January. And we can show that as a district, we went from 21, 22% of our students were to grade level to 35% of our students are at grade level. So we can show that our students are actually coming into alignment on grade level. And we can attribute it to two factors now. You've moved all of our grading to actual standardized achievement, like we know specifically what, like, we know what students know. And we've aligned our assessment tools. And I don't think it's fair to say like, we know what students know as though teachers didn't do it. But we know what students know as a district and as a system. We can actually show the improvement through our reading grade level. And again, you can kind of see this in historical years, right? Sixth grade fell behind and then you see that seventh and eighth grade, right? It was a social emotional shock to the system that we're not recovering from. And we knew that we needed to do a comprehensive rebuild and we can see this through the sixth grade rate. But we can actually see the green growing through that, um, green growing through the upper grades now. So that the issue is that red, like, we can't have that red grow. That red is effectively saying our students are getting further behind. We can't continue to allow that red to get bigger. And I think the alignment of the tool. Again, this was not a tool used in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And now this is a tool being used in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So we have this vertical, you know, this vertical alignment. This is the same level in math. Actually, our math is doing really, really well, which is really impressive when you know that math is actually the lowest area that our kindergartners are coming in with. I didn't pull that data. And again, you can see this, you can see the impact of sixth grade now. Right? So now that we have sixth grade on math and we've actually created this capacity for success, we feel really confident on that sixth grade being able to roll up on those assessments and kind of push that, that, that change, that social emotional impact on sixth grade carrying all the way through something. We actually see it on our academic grades too. So this is sixth through 12th grade, green bar being the most recent year. You can really see this in middle school, the alignment of standardized grading and the alignment of our instructional models. You can actually see that in our D and F grade. So we want that number to come down. See that in the middle school, we're having less and less students that are failing coursework, which is now driving that kind of consistent student achievement. Now, one big thing that we saw through our social emotional learning is our students that are actually failing. The number one indicator of students failing is suspension. Student gets suspended, most, if a student gets suspended, they almost close to, what do they do? They more than double the rate of failure now. And that's kind of our next level concern. So we find on our student suspensions, our students are not feeling like engaged, welcome, someone cares about them. And then we've noticed that our lowest score is on self-regulation. Students feel like they can self-regulate these behaviors. So you're like in this class that you don't feel connected to, self-regulate. And then it is unsafe behaviors, striking another student, fighting. So our number one reason why students are out is actually behaviors amongst other students. And we see in our social emotional data that we're not creating capacity for students to have positive relationships with each other. So we have a problem that we have to fix. Students are not having, we're not creating capacity for students to have positive relationships with each other for the zero to 19th percentile. We're driving fighting. Fighting is driving students getting out. And it is driving, number one reason why our students are getting behind academically. So we have work to do. This work we wouldn't have known we needed to do if we didn't have the data. Question so far. We need to adapt data on board. This one's actually a quick one. We did need to adapt data and structural materials adoption. So Board Policy 2020. On Board Policy, Board Policy Form 2020F can actually allow parent concerns on how students are learning materials. But it updated, we've updated the procedure now. We need to update the procedure to align on the standards of master-based learning. It used to be a curriculum adoption process was, here's a book. We're going to bring it in, we're going to review the book, take a recommendation, and then we will adopt the book. Um. Curriculum is what students learn. Structural materials are how students learn. Now that we've done the master-based learning and we've mapped out the standards, we're building capacity now to review materials and how those materials align to the standards and how those materials drive student learning. Next is it does require community engagement. We adopted Board Policy 2020F, which is a force. And that means that we have an ability, again, I said it before, everything we do is bringing community members in to be engaged and active involved participants in the learning of their students. So now community members can be a part of the process to review on how that student learning is met and done. And then update a more policy, update more policy on student achievement indicators. We're going to do that tonight because we need to have structural materials that drive how we're measuring student achievement, that drives how it's aligned to standards. So we need to make sure that we're working within a system that is clearly articulated and aligned. And then, sorry, that's the last one, is building that community instructional materials adoption process. This can sound crazy, but that's not just a philosophy, it's actually the state law that we have to have instructional materials need to be set up where community members can come in and review the materials that we're putting in front of your students. So, but we needed to make sure we have a rubric, a scoring system that standards align. So we need to complete the master-based system. So it's kind of like one thing in front of the other thing, in front of the other thing, in front of the other thing. Because this is just the work we've done this year. Combinating the long-range facilities process. I very firmly, I said this when I interviewed, school, this is a community district. School districts do not design facility plans. Our community designs a facility plan. We bring the community in, we lay out the information, the community makes a recommendation for the plan. Community carries the recommendation plan forward. So we had to engage the community in building a long-range facility plan, update the community long-range facility plan based upon where we are at in this community design process. And then the community made a recommendation to the board. So we just kind of talked about that process. Over a year ago, the board actually ran an advertisement in the paper and through social media for open bidding for a long-range facilities process with three bids. In the Act of Transparency, we actually did those reviewing of those bids in a public board meeting in December of 2021. Anybody in our community signed on could watch all third-party consultants. We wanted a third-party consultant because we wanted someone who did not have this, have any skin in the game and the outcome of that long-range facilities process. We actually had a grant because we hadn't completed our site survey. So the state provided a grant to pay for the long-range facility process through the updated site survey materials. We ran open advertising through social media, email, community organizations, personal invitations. Jeff here, Jeff, how many emails did you send out?
Probably 80, 80 different people.
Well, yeah, we sent signs up everywhere. We actually partnered with the pharmacy, partnered with grocery store, partnered with Starbucks, hung up signs everywhere, trying to get community members fully and actively engaged on this design. It doesn't do us any good to run a plan that's not designed by our community. We needed well-representation. And I'm going to reiterate this point, everything is designed. We ran community meetings from April to August from 2022. And those ran by a third-party consultant. So not once in those meetings did the district say this is what we want. September, we ran an actual facility survey. We sent it out to over 3,000 people in our community. And we had less, just over a 10% response rate. 3,000 people received it, just over 10% of our population responded to it. October 2002, our long-range facilities made a recommendation to the board. And this is where the board really needs to make a judgment call. We needed to respect the people who put in a year's worth of time. Because if we don't respect the people who've invested close to a year, then we're not building trust. So we've had people put in a year of time to advocate for what they want from their community. We need to respect the year's investment that these people have made. Or took action in February and then we're moving forward. So let's talk about this process. Long-range facilities began meeting on April 2028, I'm sorry, April 28th, began reviewing the data, which is looking at projected enrollment, housing permits, right? Like, construction permits, property is being sold, where people are putting places. What does the property influx look like? I'm going to say there was one fault within that. There's one fault. They did not look at migration of Olympia families and state workers into Elma. Because again, one thing you look at is you look at, um, like, birth rates in the hospital, and you can look at your birth rates and you can say, five years ago, this is your birth rate. This is what's going to drive your kindergarten rate. And we actually did. We had all the birth rates from the hospital, right? And we also had housing sales and had construction forecasting. But we did not forecast Washington State changing, Michael, you work for the state, changing how many days state employees need to go in from five days a week down to two days a week, which has actually driven a huge impact on our student growth from the large, large population of state employees moving to Elma. Then we began looking at the needs, considering on the data, on what is going to be the most impactful for our community or find the focus on our community priorities, review the estimated cost with the site. If this is what's going to cost, if this is what you want to do. And then we had the community make a recommendation, pare it down. But at the end of the day, it needs to be your plan. And finalize the recommendation and review the community feedback. And that's why we actually ran that 916. And we'll talk about that data. We'll talk about what the community said on that survey. So the survey, we had flyers at every football game, basketball game. I actually had a QR code. You can walk into Starbucks, scan the QR code, and it'll take you right to the survey. We sent this out to over 3,000 people within our community. We sent it out to all the secondary students, we sent it to all families, we had it available at all open houses. And we had a response rate of 368 back. We had generated 200 responses. It was totally open-ended. You could write in whatever you wanted. We felt that a, like a like, dislike, or a A, B, C, D survey wasn't going to cut it. We needed to give our community the ability to give an open-ended response. And then you could go in and vote and respond to what our community said. What our community say? Well, first, the data we showed them is that this year we've experienced an 11% growth district-wide, 10% growth building-wide. It's actually was pressing our overcapacity issue. We don't have anywhere for our students to go. Every building, every classroom in our elementary is overcapacity. And we have students sitting out back, I mean, every class, we're paying teacher overages in every classroom in our elementary school. We have portables at both the middle school and the high school with no capacity left for our students. That's why you call it Florida. So.
Or middle school and elementary.
Sorry, middle school, sorry. Middle school and elementary. What our community say? Well, the biggest concern was we need to do something about our HVAC system. We hear you, but there's nothing we can do about it. Because our HVAC system is actually individualized unit without central air. So every classroom has its own individualized heating system without a central air. And central air only exists in the gyms and commons. So here's the concern that we need to do something about HVAC. Our building was not built, none of our buildings were built with air conditioning, just heating. Jeff, is that right?
Yeah, their boiler system.
Boiler systems. So we hear you, but it's a very expensive fix. Because we, we installing central air in a building built in 1986 without central air. So the biggest concern was we needed something about our HVAC system. We're aware, can't do it. Number two, most popular vote, the stadium, stadium, our field and restrooms are embarrassing. Stadium could, stadium could serve multiple uses. And then the number three is elementary school is out of classroom space for growing numbers, existing elementary school, and the heating and ventilation, parking lot, and covered areas. So this was the top three most popular concerns by our families. Biggest returning theme, though, that families came back and said was class size needs to be a top priority. Your classes are too small. This is true. We're actually completely and totally out of. Class sizes are smaller class sizes for more educational programs. We want to have more programming for our students. I don't disagree. We're signing a contract for a fire prevention program tonight. But it doesn't necessarily generate room. Again, we're having students now work in industry. So we can leverage kind of any kind of capacity and space for more classrooms to have smaller class sizes. Buildings need to be updated for more additional for our growing population. Updated building room to grow more outdoor, indoor learning spaces. And our community is growing and we have not updated the class since the 1980s. So again, this is not driven by us. Where is our community divided? So let's talk about the division of our community and the judgment call. So we have a lot of options that were on the table in the long-range facilities process. We actually have capacity in our high school. But then the question came, do I want my 14-year-old with a 21-year-old? And I think the reminder is that you can go to high school until you're 21. And again, we have four rooms that are in the annex. But that four-room in the annex would not support one grade level. So the community came back and said, I don't want my 14-year-old, well, eighth grader, 13-year-old. I don't want my 13-year-old with a 21-year-old. I think that's reasonable. We also looked at the academic achievement and saw our 11-year-olds are also having the greatest loss of academics. We also looked at the same review. So the community said, yes, we have the capacity, but we don't necessarily know if we want to use that capacity because I don't think it's going to meet the needs of our community. This is where it kind of came down to brass tacks. 60% to pass a vote. We need to pass a, we need a space to hold kids. And the community came back, Jeff, just so the person speaking for the community, I don't necessarily know if that's fair. But our community came back and said, if you're going to have a 60% vote, where is everybody divided? Thank you, Kevin. Where is our community divided? Well, our community is divided on the stadium concept. Where's the 60% vote going to come from? Well, it appears that more people would vote no if you don't include it than if you do. Again, this is only from the people who responded. It did not benefit us to send it to 3,000 people to have a 10% response. We needed to send it to 3,000 people and have 3,000 people respond. But we can't help it. We have to respond to the people who engage and we have to build trust with the people that are willing to engage. And instead of tone to say, we want you to be engaged and we're going to listen to you if you're engaged. That's about the most we can do. This came from our online, our social media responses, greatest amount of division. On our emails, they had all of our parents that had less division, four to one, said that this is what we want. So the question comes down, where do you house your students? I think the other question here, that's the time, right? Like, what are our priorities? So the community looked at that and said, well, we're going to prioritize this. Again, top priority is 11% growth. Why? Well, everybody saw their house prices go up. And I think the short answer is, is I'm pretty mellow. Again, it's, it can maybe a community ask, we're going to spend the money regardless. And I think this is the conversation that came up in December was, we're going to have to spend district taxpayer money no matter what. And you deserve a say on that spending taxpayer money. We will be, Lisa, we're looking at that field over there. And behind the district office is where a portable will go. Because it doesn't impact the soccer field. And Washington State charges school districts a lot of money to do an engineering site study to get those things placed. So the thought was, is if we're going to be spending the money on a portable and that's going to be taxpayer money, you deserve a say. The cheapest time to run a bond is yesterday. Because everybody saw their house inflation prices go up. Guess what happens with construction costs? They only go in one direction. So we have the ability to run it now and give you a chance to say, yes, run it another year at three more or $4 million more. Run it another year at $4 million on top of that. And that's estimating at the current rate of current inflation that everybody else has already experienced on your houses. Not that it'll pass, but that we feel that our voters deserve a say in spending that money on a portable. And our voters deserve a say on it being $6 million or $4 million cheaper than what it will be the next time. And if it doesn't pass, I mean, honestly, we're really candid. We're just going to bring you back in. A big question came up, how come there's no blueprint drawing? We can't use them anyway. A lot of school districts will do a blueprint drawing because it looks great on votes. I'm pretty fiscally conservative. I don't like spending money I don't need to spend. Actually, I don't spend money I don't need to spend. That drawing can't be used until an engineer comes in and certifies that that building won't sink. But voters like it. But I got to buy a portable when it's done. And it doesn't seem very fiscally responsible to spend money on a drawing. That's going to need to go to a portable. So we're keeping that money for a portable. What's going to happen if it passes? We're going to have a community meeting and our community is going to design it within budget, which is kind of what you do for every construction project. How do you get these prices? Comp's. Everything through here is done exactly, if you refinance the house, you pull your comps. You design your comps, you price out your average cost per square footage on a light design. And you put out your inflation at the midpoint of construction. This doesn't work any different than if you're building a house. How do you stay in budget? Well, you have to stay in budget of the comps. So when we actually have to meet, do a design, anybody who's got any kind of special thing they want, they don't get to design it beyond the comps. If it doesn't pass, we're going to have another meeting, same meeting. We're going to be on the same agenda schedule. We're talking about how do we want to pay for the portables? What are we going to give up? It just is what it is. At the end of the day, it just needs to be community design. We just need to say what you want. Every person who's come in and said, I didn't know about this, I've taken the email. Because we're inviting them to the next round of meetings. So it's like, well, I'm really sorry you didn't get it. Well, I think I might have saw this, but I didn't respond. Because I didn't realize what was going to happen from it. That's great. I got your email now. You're going to get a personal invitation from me to come to the next round of meetings. Because I've, everything we've said tonight is, we want you to be involved. I mean, we've been meeting for a year on this topic and we've been sending out open public meetings trying to, oh, we're bribing people with food. I mean, you can come and also not buy dinner that night. All right, update our emergency preparedness plan. This, all board members, is a copy of the previous Elma School District Emergency Preparedness Plan. Here, have one of those. Take one of those. Zip. And Ryan. We just got this back from our risk management pool. Our insurance company. This actually defines now, in the instance of anything that happens, we actually have a protocol to keep your students safe. Train crashes out the back that has dangerous chemicals, we have a process in place. This is built in partnership with police department, fire department, with a series of annexes that communicate the plan and process. Right? We're working hard to keep your students safe. We just completed an entire long range safety, we're completing. Safety, security, we get to be signed off, right?
Still some pieces.
Still some pieces. We've actually moved down to an electric, electric emergency door opening. We actually have, we've been reviewing the operations plan. From August of two thousand and twenty two, an actual plan that will legitimately keep your students safe. And then we've done a complete total rewrite. And then with this is again, January two thousand and twenty three, just came back from the risk management pool. Caleb, you're doing a presentation to the board. Is there anything like people like to add on this?
How many big fifty seven?
So.
Probably more detailed than the hazmat spill supplies, large roll of plastic and plenty of tape.
It seems practical.
One and a half pages compared to.
Well, this will be longer. Like the page isn't important. What's important is, is this is actually going to be a flip chart available in every single classroom. So in the instance of a crisis, a teacher can grab it. We'll actually have the tab and the teacher will be able to know exactly where you go, how you respond. A great example is, is, and this one is the one that I find most concerning, is on a fire drill, you evacuate. On a fire drill, you don't evacuate till you have two points of contact. Right? You need to have an announcement, you need to have an email. Cause in the instance of a school shooting, students can pull a fire alarm, the students are going to evacuate and our students are no longer safe. Right? That was one of the first things we changed in our entire, our, our, our fire evacuation protocol, two points of contact. You don't pull the drill, you don't just evacuate. We are keeping all of your students safe. Right? And, and I think we changed that one without hesitation. So, I mean. That's, that's yet for the next board update. This is what we've done in the last six months, so I feel like we've been pretty good. All right, continue to study for athletic programs. We actually came in and we realized we could actually review our athletic programs. Right out the gate, we brought in athletic, Mr. Clark came as our athletic director. We did a comprehensive review for our risk management pool and we found out that our concussion protocols and our physical, our physical and mental health safety protocols for all of our coaches. And being certified that our coaches can maintain the safety of our athletes was expired. We actually re-updated a board policy procedure and broadened and renewed an entire certification and training for all of our coaches. We actually ran, ran open bidding. Again, transparency, transparency. We ran an open bid. Organizations to come in and provide our uniforms. Probably won't be Adidas anymore. Well, we're not Adidas anymore. Cause we needed to move to an open bidding process. Cause again, we're buying athletic uniforms with taxpayer money. And that needs to be an open bidding process for you as a taxpayer to understand how that athletic process has been done. Implementation and that led to the new BNS, BSN, BSN, BSN contract, which came in at the lowest bid, which provided the cheapest cost to our students. Cause again, that's the point of an open bidding process is that you're using, you're, you're bringing in, you're, you're, you're actually looking at the most cost effective process for all of your students. We implemented a new coach development and evaluation tool. So they actually have a clear black and white and how to be a coach and they almost go it straight. And we updated our board policies to bring us into clients with WIA in October of twenty twenty three. We had a lot of board policy and a lot of coaching review to bring us into that level of clients. So again, here's a copy of our coach evaluation tool. Our coaches now have this level of transparency and what to expect, then also support. Again, evaluation doesn't have to be punitive. This is just what we've done to this. Any questions?
Well, now I see why. We've been so busy. Cause there's a lot that we've been trying to make better for our district and our community.
It's been a lot. It's been a big undertaking, but. I think we've all been pretty happy to dig in and aid where we can.
There's a lot of things that I just been excited about, like the apprenticeship programs that we're offering our students and, and also giving our students. Cause I remember attending Elma High School myself and there's classes and I'm like. Why am I even having to learn this? Cause I'm never going to use it, you know, in my. Career life. And I think now it's nice to actually provide that learning. To make it more practical in the real world. And it's going to give all of our students a leg up. To go out and actually get a viable family wage job in our communities, which I. Think our goal as a district in the past was always to focus on that graduation rate, but we never quite looked at, well, what's beyond. The day they walk out in June. And I think a lot of kids are lost that first handful of years in the beginning. So I think. What we're doing is very valuable and as a community, we're definitely going to see. A real benefit in the upcoming years.
It, our, our kids deserve it. Our, our kids deserve the world. And, and the way you get to the world is our students have to be able to see what the world work is. I mean. Lot of schools are trying to figure out how to keep students safe by siloing and building these walls around the school and the rest of the community. And we really want to break those walls down and how our students engage in our Grace Harbor community and our Elma community to see what the world of work is like. Actually. Hold a shovel, hold a mail, hold a, a D burger on the job, right? Work on the fire department, be a volunteer firefighter, earn credit and bed in the academic credit through the mastery based learning and create meaning. Our kids deserve.
I think it's to Ryan's point, kids are having an opportunity to try things out. And that, that takes away that I wasted some of my time in my adult life doing these things. Or I created debt for something I don't really want to do. And I think when we went to the, to the meeting in New Orleans, it was very centered and focused around the common statement of. Not just college, but when kids, when kids went through these pathways that CTE program and whatnot would offer apprenticeships. They were getting certificates of value and that meant value in today's currency. They could leave and they could apply, they could earn and they can continue on with whatever they need to do past that. So. Those are really powerful tools to give our kids.
Appreciate it. We're, we're going to continue to send invitations. We're, we're working hard to have people show up. And we will continue to invite people to show up. And we will invite people to show up and we will invite people to show up and we will invite people to show up until everyone says you have heard. But we are really trying hard to bring people in. Yeah, we hit three thousand people with the invites and just that survey for three hundred and sixty responses. So we need people to be a part of the decision making process when the decisions are being made. And we're going to continue to represent and recognize the people that were a part of those decisions.
Thank you, Chris, for all of that. Okay, well, we'll move on to communications and comments. Do you have anybody from ETO? E E S P. Somebody from the help us. Admin. And persons to be heard slash public comment.
Adam's up. You can do whatever you want.
Yeah, Chris, can you remind me what the, the public comment time will work for the two or three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay, thank you. So go ahead and.
Slightly over, is that allowed?
It's three minutes. We have to be respectful if everyone's here, so we'll do our best to stick within that.
In no way, shape or form can I support a bond like the district is asking for. The amount that raises our property taxes is sickening. Inflation and how property taxes have already went up this year, this bond is passed would be a hard call to solve for the community. Personally, the property taxes, my wife and I pay would go up two thousand one hundred and sixty eight dollars. Which would bring our monthly total of property taxes up to seven hundred and ninety two dollars a month. Our small, our small business that we operate would go from three hundred and twenty four dollars to four hundred and twenty dollars a month. The total of taxes that my family and business combined, if this passes, would be one thousand two hundred and twelve dollars a month. And fourteen thousand five hundred and forty six dollars in total for the year. Those numbers reflect current values. Yes, some will see less, but some significantly more. And discussed it, how the district went about gathering. Input from the community or more so their lack of effort to do so. I was told by an individual, it was on your committee. But the district put information on their Facebook page, citizens for Elma School District or something like that. And I'm sorry, but I don't go to Starbucks. I don't go to sports events, so. That was news to me. If you people were all concerned about the community's input on this matter, you went down to the county auditor's office to get everyone's mailing address that is a registered voter in the school district. However, you did not, and I personally don't think that you wanted to. This bond didn't even get a con statement written for it, nor did most anyone even know about it until the teachers were down holding signs by the traffic light. I'll be honest with you, with everyone in this room, when I saw the signs for a bond, I told myself to look at it with an open mind. Because I assumed that it was for the stadium. And when I opened my envelope and saw the sixty six million dollars, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty one million with interest being asked out of the community. My wife and I couldn't mark reject and get it in the mail fast enough. The committee that was selected to help the school district board know what the community wanted was also poorly put together from what I hear. How can a committee, how can a committee give an honest answer to the board when it consists mostly of teachers, staff and coaches that are all employed by the district? This committee should have consisted of mostly community members and business owners. I was told by a person that there was an option that would allow room for both the elementary and middle school buildings if some of the junior high were to move over to the high school, which you explained. That and. Sorry. The. The company that the district hired, Teeter and Crocker, and Chris Nesmith said that that would, that was an option, that it would work. I was also told that the committee. Wouldn't get on board with any option that did not include a new sports facility. If I remember correctly, this person told me that there was three options available at the end of the committee meetings, twenty five, fifty and sixty six million dollars. Options. Obviously, the committee told the school board that the sixty six million dollar option was what they thought the community would support. Last I checked, this school district, its staff and its teachers. Were, are all paid by our tax dollars. This bond is full of greed and unnecessary wants from a school district that is full of teachers, staff, coaches, board members and a superintendent that are completely out of touch with reality. And what the community can afford. Elma does not have the business infrastructure for the solid tax base this bond needs. Proposing a bond of this amount and keeping it so quiet. Is not the way to gain back the trust. Of this community and the fact that the district is running this bond in February of a non-election year when voter turnout is historically low. Gives me all the reason I need to never trust this school district ever again. I hope this community stands up to all you people and forces you to go back to the table. With a more realistic outlook on this matter. I will not be taxed off of the land it has been in my family since they homesteaded it in the eighteen eighties.
Thank you for letting me go to full time.
Absolutely. Any other persons to be heard?
I don't have anyone. Is there anyone here that wanted to speak?
Thank you so much. We'll go ahead and move to our new business approval of the MOU between East Grace Harbor Fire and Rescue and the Elma School District. Are you here for?
So we've been, we've been working on this project for quite some time, probably what, three, four years? But we finally got an opportunity and wrote up an MOU with East Grace Harbor Fire Department. To start a fire cadet program. And what that MOU basically involves is that Elma School District would provide. It's a, a great, it's a memorandum of understanding. So what it was is that Elma School District would provide to students, where we're looking at juniors and seniors. We would also support and purchase curriculum and equipment. That equipment would be housed with the fire department. And then we would. And then support, support the fire department. The fire department in turn is going to provide the instructor. So our students would actually be on our Elma School District campus and also at the fire, fire department. Typically, what we're thinking is it would be a first period opportunity for those students. And then those students then with the fire department would have some extended training. That we were hoping to have an agreement with the school district to use our old bus garage for training that would be for our students. And then also for the fire department. So it should be a win-win. The only thing that's the caveat to this is for us as a school district to have enough students that would be interested, we're looking at trying to have a twelve, fifteen person cohort. But also for our fire department to have the staff for it. And as you know. It is, and it is an ever concern for us to have staffing in order to do this. We have a variety of local community members that are very excited to volunteer. But how the, we would do this with the fire department is that the chief and the education program director would be CTE certified through our state. And then they would be the instructors, the primary instructors, and then we would bring in and be approved by our, our school district as volunteers. And then we'd bring in different volunteers on random days depending on the lesson and things like that. Ultimately, in the future, what we'd like to do is rotate that the first year could be a fire cadet program. And then next year would be EMT and we rotate those two things so that our students actually could. They started a junior graduate with, with those credentials to go over to. The field and/or just get the experience to see if that is really the type of career that they want to be in. Or if they're looking to, to change directions. Cause as you guys know, in high school years, we know that it's just as important to figure out what they don't want to do. As it is figuring out what they want to do. Rose, you want to add anything to that?
No.
Okay, so what we're, the, the, the goal would be is that the school board would approve this, which we're hoping for. And then the next task would be then the fire department would be bringing it to their constituents for the approval and then we would sign everything.
Sorry. I have a question. How long do you guys anticipate that those volunteers would take to be CTE certified?
It's a pretty, pretty simple process as long as, well, I can't say simple. The time, timeframe is we could get it pretty much done within thirty to sixty days. But what we would do is we would bring it to our advisory committee for approval. And then we have to prove that they are capable and have the knowledge to do that, which they do because they're in the field. And then it would be signed up by our advisory board, myself and our superintendent. And then of course, we would go through volunteer process approval of this.
I move for the approval of the MOU between East Grace Harbor Fire and Rescue and the Elma School District number sixty eight.
I second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? On paper? Oppose?
I.
Oh, sorry, Jamie. Oppose? Motion carries. Remember those.
Super excited.
I am sorry. Approval of policy two thousand four accountability goals first reading?
Yeah, we are making a recommendation. We actually are moving forward the recommendation using what was the prototypical language. That a school improvement plan would still use your S E S E A on your, on your graduation rates for students. But then we also wanted to add the second level of reporting on alignment to the district improvement goals. This will actually give some flexibility within the alignment of actually our post-secondary transition data and how we want to drive our post-secondary transition data. And having data that is showing students moving to the next phase of their life. So we are seeking approval on a board policy, first reading board policy two thousand and four.
I'm for the approval of policy twenty oh four accountability goals first reading.
I'll second it.
Sorry, Jamie, you're too late on your delay.
That's all right.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose? Motion carries. Hi, reports superintendent minister.
I just want to do the reiteration on the launch, coming back and actually being on the team. That was kind of exciting. I think the, the statement that stood out to me on our launch event was the, they said they view the work as though you're on a moving sidewalk. And they wanted to take top schools in the nation that have done this work. Again, there's not many schools across the state of Washington and. We've actually built a registered apprenticeship system. And they wanted to take the schools that have built the career pathways, the apprenticeship system, taking the internship system that Ms. Kershaw has already built. Through our summer act, act, and co-op program. And actually take that, put us on this moving sidewalk. We're moving beyond the rest of the schools in the state and across the nation. The idea being that if we can actually build this really new education system that prepares students for workforce. That we can begin systemizing as a, as a model for the rest of the nation. So to actually have, it's so funny when you talk about like education, you always think.
So to actually have um, it's so funny when you talk about like, education, you always think like workforce, like, or education with the world of academia, academia. You know, like Harvard is like the king of academia. And Harvard is on this big mission to build more workforce training programs, identifying like, we're this nation in crisis if we don't do something, solve our workforce issue. And to bring this alignment for our workforce issues and to know that we're having this level of support. That um, is going to be hand in hand with uh. Critical programs that we've already done. Kind of take it to a new level. So we're only, what's in a week out of that.
Great, thank you. Ms. Hanson, student rep report.
Well, I won't keep you guys too long because it has been a pretty long meeting. Um, but I wanted to bring up practicing empathy. I think that's a really important quality to have in today's world is to be empathetic towards other people, put yourselves in their shoes, try to feel an absolute emotions that they're feeling. It's the best way to relate to others in the society that we live in, best way to get along with people so we can all move forward and grow. And that starts with ourselves. It starts with the way that we talk to ourselves. If we talk to ourselves in a negative way. Telling yourself that you're a loser all the time, you're going to start really thinking that and feeling that and treating other people in that way too. So I ask you, even if it's just once tonight, or even if you keep practicing for the rest of the week, for the rest of the month, whatever. Or even if you only practice once a month, that if you have a negative thought about yourself, I want you to pick out one thing that you like about yourself. Whether that's something physical about yourself, like, oh, you know what? My hair looks really good today. Or those pants look really good on me today. I really like those. Or. You know, I really am proud that I held the door for someone today, or I really am glad that I told that person I liked their shoes. I. Have the opportunity to make a new friend and make a new connection, and maybe I really made their day. So I just. Think that that'd be a good thing for all of us to do and something that all of us can practice.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughtfulness. Okay, we'll go ahead and end the uh, regular portion of the meeting. We're going to convene to executive session for thirty minutes. Uh, to perform um, about the performance game. Oh, thank you. That would be about the performance for a public employee with no action to be taken. That would be for thirty minutes. Everyone, have a good evening. Thank you.
I moved that we adjourned the meeting.
I second that, Marcin.
There's been a motion made in seconded call in favor.
I.
Motion.